Good evening. Welcome to the Hanson Select Board meeting, open meeting on May 23rd, 2023. We are here tonight to have our Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me in Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So our first new business on the agenda is to welcome our new Select Board member, David George. Welcome. Congratulations. And to vote a Chair. May I have nominations for Chair of the Hanson Select Board?
I nominate Laura.
I second.
Any other nominations? Any discussion? I'll take a vote. Mr. George?
I'm good with it.
It's called. After you.
Okay, Laura.
Madam Chair?
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I was kind of enjoying having somebody else over for this meeting. I will entertain a motion for Vice Chair.
I nominate Joe.
I would second that.
Any other nominations? Okay, roll call vote.
Aye.
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 Okay, great. I will entertain a motion for Clerk.
Can we discuss it? Or do we just nominate? I don't know if somebody else wants it.
I have no problem doing it again. Is that what you wanted to discuss?
Yeah, yeah. I nominate Ann.
Okay. I will entertain a second.
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote.
Aye.
Do I say aye?
Yes. Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right. Well, I'm excited to be working with you guys. And we welcome David George as our new member. And we will move right along. So next up on our agenda is, I think we skipped public announcements.
Yes, we did.
So Mrs. Rain, as our newly appointed and previously appointed Town Clerk, I'm sorry, Clerk, I'm wondering if you'd be willing to read the public announcements at upcoming meetings.
But of course. Announcements. We are looking for citizens at large to become members of the following committees: Cable and Internet Committee, Capital Improvement Committee, Community Preservation Committee, Conservation Commission, Historical Commission, Memorial Day and Patriotic Observance Committee, Memorial Field Trustees, Nathaniel Thomas Mill Committee, and the Zoning Board of Appeals. Voter or volunteer applications may be found on the town website, www.hanson-ma.gov, or by calling Select Board's office at 781-293-2131. The Hanson Public Library is asking citizens to help plan for the library's future. The library is preparing to submit an Massachusetts Public Library Construction Grant and is seeking input about improvements in library services to the community and the library facility that supports those services. Citizens can assist with this effort by participating in one of the library's public focus groups scheduled for Monday, June 5th, 2023, 6:30 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., and Tuesday, June 6th, 2023, 11:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. Upcoming meetings: Select Board Strategic Planning Session, May 30th, 2023, and Select Board, June 13th, 2023.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Rain. With that, we have got our new Veterans Agent, and I have not yet perfected the pronunciation of your last name, so I'm trying to tiptoe through the tulips on that one. Mr. Gabakis?
That's perfect.
Okay, all right. So normally, we would have you step up to the podium, but we're at a bit of a disadvantage. We don't really have that setup. So you could just, if you want to lay it out, tell us where we're at with the Memorial Day Parade and what the plans are.
For the Memorial Day Parade, we're going to be just gathering up around 9:55, just get everyone all situated and whatnot, and then we start festivities, well, the event at 10 o'clock. Just be a short event at the Indian Head School. We're going to be just raising the, lowering the flag to half-mast. After that, then we proceed down over here to the Town Hall in Leah Reef over here by the memorial. And then after that, we're going to just go down to Indian Head, sorry, the cemetery.
Yep.
And then finish the memorial ceremony there with the reading of the government's proclamation and also singing the National Anthem and all those other festivities. And including from there, we should be finished by 12 o'clock. And after that, we should be going over to the American Legion, hopefully to have short snacks and whatnot.
Yep. Cool. Okay. All right. That's great. Is there anything that this board can do to support you, other than, I believe that we're all planning on attending? Are we all able to be there? Or?
So the biggest issue that I had for planning this year was, I guess, for the high school, the band, they had a lot of faculty changeover. So this is an understanding about the agreement that we had between Whitman and Hanson, between alternating the band. And that way, so we kind of, and kind of fell through for this year for us. But getting together with the faculty and have an understanding that we're going to be rotating the band from now on.
Okay.
But that, that's it.
Yeah, they have had some, some of their longstanding music teachers, one of them's quite ill and, yeah, so they've had some issues there. I'm wondering if we put out an APB kind of thing to the general public, there might be some little, like Southeastern Villa harmonic or some little band that might be willing to, Mr. Clemens?
The, Frank Spurkey, who coordinated the sound, released his last year maybe for a few years, has explained the lack of band situation to some of the church, the Christian Church. And there is a core group of people who are willing, able, and preparing to lead in the National Anthem and God Bless America, whatever the appropriate times are. My wife and I are actually co-leaders of that group. So that's, that would be the one, I guess. But it's a, it's, there's a plan in place for that.
Okay, all right, okay.
It will not be missed, and we will not fail to do it ourselves.
That's great. So it's not going to be the robust high school band, but we will have some?
Yeah, there would be, it's just, it's not going to expect to have like a marching band from Indian Head School down to the cemetery. That's just the only thing.
And will we have the Widows?
Yes. They're supposed to, yes, that was already taken care of.
Okay. They're amazing. Okay. I mean, you're fortunate in a way that Mr. White has, you know, has laid a really great foundation. And I'm sure you'll add things to it as you, you know, get comfortable in the job, you'll add your own little flair to it. But you've got a really great foundation to build on. So, and we thank, we thank Mr. White for helping you, because, you know, your timing coming in was kind of awkward to, you know, like, here you go, just handle that Memorial Day Parade and, you know. So, all right, any questions from the board? Okay. Any comments, Ms. Green?
Just that, I guess, the antique cars will be a part of the parade again this year.
Good. Great. And again, please reach out to our office if there's anything. I don't want you to feel like you're doing this by yourself. You know, I know ultimately, the responsibility rests with you, but if there's anything that we can do to support you, let us know, and we'll call in the troops or do whatever we can.
Will do.
Okay. All right. Well, if we don't talk to you before then, we will see you on Monday. Okay. And we've got Mr. Clemens here to, I assume, to discuss Conservation Commission current membership and expansion. Mr. Clemens?
Well, we're fortunate to have in place right now, unless I'm missing something, five current seated members, which is a full complement.
Yep.
But I think the question that's come up, maybe one of us has asked about associate members, and I just have a few points of information about that, and maybe even a suggestion. We've done a quick informal survey of a number of other towns or communities in Massachusetts to see what approach they take to that with their commissions. And there's a variety of approaches, a little more variety than I thought. But it seems like most every commission allows for one or more associate commissioners to be appointed generally by the Board of Selectmen, just as the commissioners themselves are. A few, and I've only seen one that I know of, but maybe more than, do allow for a, call it a temporary elevation when necessary by lack of a quorum, of associate members to vote on an issue. I personally am not in favor of that. I think it's confusing. It also raises the question, how prepared is someone who hasn't been a regular commissioner and maybe is, depending on their attendance and all, might have slightly less of an credential providing. But a few do that. More of them, though, including Hanson, I think, specify that associate members are non-voting, that the Mass Association and Conservation Commissioners, I've read their guides, I didn't know exactly where they were saying, an associate member of a Conservation Commissioner has all the rights of a mission except to vote. But what we have found is that it's a good training role for good, sort of succession planning process.
Yep.
And I think a couple of our current members have been associate members, both of them, remember, I don't know. Okay, not this person, but there have been others, and I was an associate, and I was an associate. I was an associate now for a number of years, and.
We're not going to ask how long ago.
Well, there've been two turns. I was in, I was in the 1980s.
Okay, yeah.
And I took it 20 years off of raising children. But the idea is, I think, to have sort of members in training, or commissioners in training, and it's a much better way, I think, than, or at least has advantages over just bringing in people who are important on the street. They're eligible for training at the workshops that the Massachusetts Association works online. I think we only have one associate member right now.
Is that Stephen Smith who we just appointed?
Yes, that quite recently appointed, and he's in the lead district. I think the ideal to have more than one. I can almost even see having three or four. I don't know where to look for guidance to say, is there some as-yet undiscovered legal cap on it?
I don't know. Let us circle back and take a look at that. I love the idea, and I agree. Honestly, I'd love all our land use boards to have, like, I'd love to have planning and DBA, have like a farm team that we can pull up if we need to and, you know, that, yeah.
Provide us in a less position.
Yep.
I think the appointment makes it easier.
Yes.
I kind of like the idea of, say, three anyway, but that's just.
All right, well, allow, does anybody disagree with the concept of it? Okay. Yeah, I think we universally agree with that. So allow us to circle back and take a look. It may be that we might need to tweak a bylaw or something very minor of that sort. But we're not going to get voting rights. I tend to think it doesn't have to get that, you know.
Right. We've experienced only a very few cases, and it wasn't, very few cases, I haven't even named any, of where we couldn't achieve a quorum to achieve a vote and do the business of a public.
And you need three, right, to have a quorum?
Right.
Yeah.
And if you had three, and one person had to recuse themselves or something, well, you know, that's unfortunate. But that's why you have five members to deal with. We strive for good attendance, and we've been achieving that quite well for a long time. But again, the associate member, whatever the enabling regulations or bylaws ought to, are or ought to be, we can look at that. As I say, I'm kind of attracted to the idea of having up to three associate members, because if you draw on one or two to become members due to illness, retirement, or moves or whatever, you don't want to have a pool of zero.
No, I think it's a great idea, and I know you guys are doing yeoman's work on, you know, trail clearing, you've got, you know, all the work you've done at Smitty's Bog, up at the Last Meadows, and the list could go on and on and on. And that requires bodies and, you know, so, so, and I, and I think I mentioned to you when I saw you at the polls on Saturday, but since you're here, I do want to really thank you and the rest of the commission. I had the opportunity to go to Last Meadows, I think it was on Friday, which is up at the former Plymouth County Hospital, and loved it. And I can imagine what it's going to be, and it's only at the very beginning of what its potential is. And of course, I'm a huge fan of Smitty's Bog, and I noticed you guys have done a ton of work there. I can see, I can see the vision. I can see the vision, I can see the improvements, and it doesn't happen without dedication from all of you guys, so I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. We're trying.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Clemens? All right, so allow us to circle back, and we'll, we'll let you know, we'll have our people call your people and let you know what the situation is on that. But I think in principle, we have no problem unless there's some huge legal impediment to this, which I'm not inclined to think there is.
Right. My little summary of it is that the wise management concept of succession planning, I think this is that.
Yep, definitely.
It'd be nice if we had that area.
We're all about that, Mr. Clemens. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
All right. And I'm assuming you folks are here to, regarding 1458 liquors? Just a wild guess. So we're going to move around the agenda a little bit. So on item six, we've got vote to accept DBA change for 1458 liquors to be Luke's Liquors. Ms. Green, did you have anything to say about this, or is it rather self-explanatory?
Yeah, this is just a formality for a name change. We've been, we've reached out to the ABCC just to make sure there were not other formalities we needed to follow. Basically, they said it's just a vote of the board. There's no other requirement. Lynn has actually run upstairs to get the signature page. Apparently, the packet that we had was missing the signature page, so she should, that can be signed afterwards.
And is there a specific motion that we should be making? Or, oh, here we are. Wait a minute.
No.
No, all right. Is there any type of specific motion that we should be making?
Just a motion to vote to accept the doing business as change for 1458 liquors to be Luke's Liquors.
Okay. Did you folks want to say anything, or, I mean, I don't think it's necessary, but just if you wanted?
I just wondered, why, why are you going to, everybody knows it is 1458. I've had people say this to me. So you just want to be the same as Luke's because it's the same company?
Yeah, it's on.
Just makes it easier for you guys? Yeah.
I think Luke's Liquors has got cachet.
Oh, no, I know. But I figured it was to make things easier for their business. I was asking the question that has been asked. Now everybody's heard the answer.
And I think we've, everybody's, it's been widely known that they're.
No, I know, but, yeah, everybody knows they're Luke's Liquors.
Okay, well, we value you guys doing business in town. We're thrilled with you guys doing business in town. Glad that you're staying here. Hope you think about improving and expanding, because we're all about that. And I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the 1458 DBA change to Luke's Liquors.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you also, ma'am.
Okay, have a good night.
You as well.
All right, and that brings us to Discuss Treasurer/Collector Agreement. Ms. Green?
Yes, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Board. So our current Treasurer/Collector, her contract currently is, basically, she opted to renew or enter into an agreement with the town last year for a one-year agreement. And she has asked, she would like to stay on for another year, and she has asked the Board to consider her, the agreement that's before you. Basically, there's no change other than the salary, which was approved at town meeting. Vacation, sick, all those other provisions remain the same. There's no change. Although she did send me a quick little text message that she, we may have to revisit the certifications line, because she realizes that her certifications expired in December of '22. So she's asked that we need to revisit the certification line.
What does that mean?
So for her certifications, she will need to re-get her certifications, to be paid her stipends.
Does that expose the town in any way?
No. It, what, but what it does is it just basically, her, the stipends that she was being paid for holding those certifications, she will not qualify for them while she is going through the certification process. But she's been an employee in the Treasurer/Collector's office for 20 years, I say, so.
So it says to maintain all certification and bonding requirements established by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and any other regulatory agency. So we're maintaining the bonding requirement?
She has her bonding, yes.
Okay. But the certification?
Yeah, she will need to just apply to get the certifications renewed. And we will, if you would like to table this for the next meeting, I will speak with her and see where she is in that process.
I think we need a timeline, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
And I guess my other question would be, I know this is a relatively new concept that we've been talking about here at Town Hall, which is giving employees reviews on a regular basis. Has Mrs. Sullivan been reviewed at all?
She does have a review in there from two prior town administrators. So I hope to be able to start implementing department head reviews, hopefully within the next six months, as we're stepping up and getting caught up with many of the things that the office has been working to bring back up to current, basically. Unfortunately, with the, with the change of town administrators, some things had fallen through the cracks, but hopefully, we're going to begin those reviews. But her personnel file does show that she was reviewed by two prior town administrators.
And are you recommending to this board that we enter into a renewal contract with her?
Yes, yes. I'm highly recommending it, yes.
And you mentioned that nothing has changed other than the salary?
Yes, that's correct.
I think, do you guys think you might want to hear about the plans for certification before we, I think, just to be consistent, you know, when Mr. Glass had the certification things?
Yes, we have to be consistent.
We wanted a plan of, of, you know, what, what he was going to do and in what timeframe, and if, not to go off topic here, but since I just mentioned him, we probably need to hear where he's at, because I believe Memorial Day-ish was his deadline. So I think we would want to know from Mrs. Sullivan what her game plan is.
Okay, yes.
Okay.
Yes, I will reach out to her.
We're meeting next week, so, you know, we can briefly talk about that, hopefully.
Yeah, we can, we can do that. I can get an answer from that.
Did anybody have any other questions about this particular item on the agenda? Mr. George, are you okay on that? Okay, awesome. All right, that brings us to Discuss Home Rule Petition, October 4th, 2021, Special Town Meeting Article. Ms. Green?
Yes, so October 2021, there was an article that was presented at town meeting that referenced, I'm sorry, I don't want to really paraphrase it, but where is that? Article 19. All right, so it was a petition to basically be sure that any builder or developer in town must complete all financial obligations and all permitting obligations prior to moving on to a, a new development, or a new, basically, a new project.
Right. So this was the one that, that I wrote?
Yes.
And then Kate tweaked, and it was basically, the genesis of this was some developers in town who had not complied with the orders of conditions and had not finished things like curbs, drainage, things like that, and had moved on to start building somewhere else. And we had no leverage to make them do that. We had no leverage to make them finish up what they had not finished. And they were leaving homeowners in the lurch. So this passed in 2021, so can you tell us what's been going on with it since then?
Yes, so it was brought to my attention, this was passed in October of 2021. And just to bring a little history, unfortunately, there was an incident that happened, and our executive assistant was no longer employed with the town two days after town meeting. This particular article was in the folder and unfortunately, got behind as we worked through that, worked through that timeframe. It was brought to my attention what happened with this article. I was able to get the article out of the folder and see that it was a home petition, which means that we, we send this to Town Council. What they do is they take the bylaw and they put it into a format for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Home Petition Rule. They also, they generate a cover letter, and they have, there is a motion that is attached to this little packet. And then once this, these formalities happen tonight, this will be forwarded to Senator Brady's office for him to present this for legislation.
Okay. So again, town meeting voted to support this article?
Yes, it did.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Does the timeframe, is that an issue?
No.
Okay.
No, not at all, not at all. Town Council would have let us know if there was an issue.
So as far as the timeframe, if somebody built a house after this was, the town meeting approved this, and then didn't finish and moved on to something like, can we go back?
No, it's not retroactive. This, this is from the point at which it's, it's accepted by the General Court.
By the court, not the town.
Not just by us, not just by the town. So we've still got a ways to go before it's, before it's official.
How long does that take?
Well, once we submitted to Senator Brady's office, and then Representative Josh Cutler's office gets it too, they will put it before the next legislature for it to be voted on. So we'll have to look and see what their schedule is.
So the fall?
Yeah, this should be, this should be buttoned up by the fall.
Okay.
So we'll have to read this?
That would be amazing.
I move the Board adopt the Home Rule Petition as approved at the October 4th, 2021, Town Meeting, Article 19, and submit same to the General Court.
Second. Any further discussion? Any questions? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, amazing. Okay, and then that brings us to Accept Patricia Wheeler's resignation to the Capital Improvement Committee. I will entertain that motion.
I move. So moved.
Second with progressive.
Okay. All in favor? Okay. One-day liquor license. I will entertain a motion to approve the banquet skating club liquor license for 616.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? All right, fantastic. Committee updates. Anybody have any burning deep desire on committee updates to update? Now, while we're talking about committee updates, I'm going to go a little off-script, as per usual, and just mention, really think about the committees that you're assigned to, and whether, and whether you have the bandwidth to continue to be assigned to those, like, ones that you volunteered to be. And then, because we're each going to have to take on subcommittees, and Mr. Hickey leaving, we've got, you know, liaison and subcommittees and all that stuff, and so just real, let's really think about it. And then I know, I did watch the school committee meeting last night. They're going to reorganize. We're going to need somebody from the regional, for the Regional Agreement Committee, for the school district, and all of that. So one other thing that I really would like to think about, and again, it's not necessarily committee, but we've got to figure out ASAP how we get together with the school committee folks and with Whitman, and talk about, I can't even call it the elephant. It's sort of like the, I don't know, Tyrannosaurus Rex in the room. Something bigger than an elephant. And sit down and talk about where we're at now, where we're, you know, when, when meetings need to happen, when the actual firm numbers will be known by each of the parties, and think about worst-case scenario, best-case scenario, and how we try to do as much as we possibly can with the amount of money that we have. So I really think that that's an order of business, Ms. Green, that I would like to really try to see if we can, you know, if we can start getting popping on. I personally plan on reaching out to whoever the Chair of the Whitman Select Board will be, and the newly elected Chair of the School Committee, Beth Stafford, and, and open that dialogue. And I don't want it to be a saber rattling, finger pointing exercise. There's no need. We only have so much money. And we all have responsibilities that we take seriously. And so I just want to open up a respectful dialogue and start that conversation. We had all agreed when we said that it was one-time money back before town meeting, and we reached that agreement, it was one-time money, and we had to talk about it ASAP while the ASAP is here, so we've got to start talking about it. All right, I will now step off of my soapbox, and we will go on to approve open session. Oh, yeah, yeah, go for it.
Just a question. We need to know what committees need what.
So we'll have a list at our next meeting? Well, not, not the next, but the.
I'm still working on it. I'd like to have a draft for, hopefully, the 30th, so that when you come to the 13th, it's all done and ready to vote on.
Well, wait a minute. To be clear, are you talking about the reappointment list or our committees?
Well, it's going to be the reappointment list.
Okay.
I have to work on your committee.
All right.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, I, I thought that that's what you were talking about. So, um, I mean, we can, we can talk briefly about it now. So Economic Development Committee, I'm on, if, you know, I'd like to stay on that. If somebody has a burning desire, I'd love to have somebody else if they want to. Ed, what are you on? You've got conservation, capital improvement.
Conservation, capital improvement, um, energy, um, drainage. I think that might be for town stuff.
And Joe, you're?
Um, capital improvement and I am on, I think I'm a liaison for Finance Committee and High Street Park Committee, Task Force for the transfer station.
Yep.
I know there's other ones, I'm blanking.
And I mean, Task Force for the transfer station, I think you kind of need to, if you don't, you know, mind me saying, stay on that because you've kind of already been, you know what I mean? Like to have somebody jump in now would be weird, I think, but, um, and then I know you had some thoughts about whether we need to think about, uh, maybe taking a look at the High Street Park Committee and, and, you know, what the-
Yeah, we have a meeting on Thursday, so we'll talk about some of that stuff.
All right, good. And then, um, the capital improvement, where are you guys at? I really liked having you guys on the Capital Improvement Committee, I think it helped a lot. Um, do, but is that too much for you guys to do?
It's not, doesn't meet often, and you're an associate, correct?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're appointed members, so I think I'm a liaison to it, that's about it, but other than that, we're appointed members, so it's, it's not like it's a selectmen, um, obligation, it's our free time.
Okay, all right.
I think we need to be on there.
We do need a new, uh, member though.
We do need a new member, we've got that on the list. Um, and, um, okay, all right. And, um, so I'm McQuan Reuse Library Liaison and Economic Development. McQuan Reuse, I want to rename to something else because we're not reusing McQuan. Um, so, um, we need to talk about, I don't know what we call it, but maybe we'll have that meeting, we'll talk about same, similar thing with the High Street, like maybe those committees with what their original, um, objective was, have, have, we've seen them as far through as we can and now they've got a different purpose. Um, so, um, and what-
I think all I am is police and highway.
Okay.
I would like to, if it's open and no one, my, I'd like to be the senior liaison.
I think that would be great, yeah.
Which one is it?
Senior.
Senior liaison, which Jim had.
Yep.
Um, yeah.
I can't really be on committee committees yet until I stop working completely, but I'm working on it, I'm working on that.
Okay, and is there anything that really like, you know, grabs you? Um, if you don't mind me saying, I was kind of hoping you might be our liaison to the Veterans Agent, it seemed to make a lot of sense with what you're doing outside of, of, you know, the select board and I think, you know, he's new and he needs support.
I like Joey's.
Okay, all right, and then we'll see what other things might come up, but, um, you know.
I, I could, I can give you the police one if you want to, you know, because he's, he's a, he's a-
That makes sense.
Yeah, that does make sense, doesn't it?
Yeah, it does. If, you know, if you're so inclined, like, we're not trying to force anything on you.
If you want, if you want, but those two liaison jobs, they're, they're not heavy.
No, no, it's really just, really the liaison position is just so that the department heads know that they have somebody on the board they can always reach out to.
Okay, yeah, I'm good with that.
Um, and, and, you know, if they really need you to advocate for something, you'd be the one and just to, you know, get the lay of the land of what's going on with them and, you know, just, and I think with your background, you'd probably, you know, you'd be speaking their language. A lot of times, you know, I'll talk to Chief Mix and he's amazing, but I have no idea sometimes what the acronyms are that he's throwing at me. Um, so, um, okay.
I'm good with that.
All right, well, we'll, we'll formally discuss it, but I just kind of wanted to get that bubble in so people were thinking about it. Um, all right, we won't take any action because we won't, we weren't posted to, um, make any decisions on that. Anything else? One other thing that Mr. Heel had mentioned to me, um, at the polls was, um, because, you know, when you get eight hours, you stand at the polls, you get nothing to do but talk to everybody. Um, one of the things that, uh, Mr. Heel had mentioned and I, I thought it was a good idea is I, I really would like to, I know we've got the strategic planning session, okay? And that's great and, you know, and, and I want to keep that going, but I really would like to try to think about, how do we have like a, um, a brainstorming session with ourselves, with Lisa, to figure out what are our priorities? What do we want to focus on? Because we can't be everything to everybody. Um, it's just not sustainable. And we have to pick one or two or three really important things that we're going to focus on and then when we make, um, you know, we, we make some progress in those, then we'll set some more goals. Um, so, um, do you think we should just post a meeting where we just sit in open session and just have a brainstorming session or what do we do with that? Well, how, how do you guys, or do you want to each think about it and we have Lynn compile it and then we discuss it? I'm, I'm open to thoughts on this.
I think we just pay it a line item on the agenda and we discuss it.
Just brainstorm?
Yeah.
Okay, you agree, Joe?
Yeah.
Okay, you guys agree?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right. Um, okay, great.
Do you need that next week or do you want to wait later in June?
We'll have to wait, next week, I just, I don't want to, again, my main goal is not to keep anybody in that strategic planning session waiting. Um, I felt so rude doing that the last time. Um, so, yeah, we can do. Do you guys, what are, what are our meeting dates in June?
The 13th and the 27th.
Okay. Do you think we should change those up or are people committed to those two dates?
Those are good dates.
Okay.
I'm not committed.
You're not committed? I like your thought process. All right, but do you have, I'm not trying to get into your business, but are you able to change if we needed to?
You have to, but are you going to add or just change?
No, I was thinking of changing.
Okay.
I, like, I was thinking of doing the 6th and then skipping the 13th and doing whatever that next, what was the other one?
27.
Yeah, the 27th. What do you think about that?
That's fine.
Just because I feel like we've got a lot of stuff to start off with and then, you know, are you guys able to do the 6th?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So, Mr. George, are you able to do the 6th? Okay, so are you ladies able to do the 6th?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great. So can we just make that little tweak? All right, next week, I feel like we might as well just, uh, you know, take up the town hall, we're going to be together Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, it's crazy next week, so, um, anyway.
Well, Monday's the holiday, so I hope we're not together on Monday.
I was going to say, we're doing good on Monday.
Monday, we're going to be at Memorial Day. Tuesday, we've got, you know, the, um, the strategic planning session, Wednesday, we have the Fire Chief Ceremony, so, yeah.
All right, so we're, we're taking, we're getting rid of the 13th.
We're getting rid of the 13th, yep. Um, and, um, speaking of the Fire Chief Ceremony, um, there's some paperwork that the town clerk needs to get from us to do the swearing in ceremony on two, on Wednesday, so, um, can you guys just check into that, make sure that we get, I think it's just that appointment letter?
Oh, she has that, I don't think she has Charlie's.
She does, she has it for, um-
For Robbie.
Mr. O'Brien, Chief O'Brien, uh, but she doesn't have it for the other gentleman. Um, and there might be a question about the dates for Mr. O'Brien in the letter. So if you guys can just circle back with her, that would be awesome.
Absolutely.
Um, because we don't want to get to the swearing in ceremony and not have any swearing in happening.
We'll make sure that everybody, everybody has everything they need.
Yep, they'll be swearing, but no swearing in if that happens. Um, okay, um, then we've got, um, open session minutes from May 16th. Um, did anybody have any questions or comments?
Any good motion to approve, as submitted?
All right, thank you very much.
Second.
Okay, great. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to abstain because I wasn't here.
You abstain? Okay, yeah, that's fine.
There's three, there's three, so.
Yeah, yeah. Um, you certainly can abstain, just as, just for the record, you have the ability to vote if you want to, but we're fine, so I wouldn't worry about it. Um, Ms. Green, Town Administration report.
Okay, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Board. So I'm going to, I'm going to touch on a couple, a couple of things that, um, Madam Chair talked about still a while ago regarding the schools. So had kickoff meeting with John Madden, uh, who is going to conduct our financial analysis of the town and provide us with a Madden Report. Um, and he is basically, um, starting the process, he is going to be doing a five to six-year look back of the town revenues and expenditures, um, and he will present those findings to us in either the late June or early July. So this is a good starting point for our finances as we go into the school, um, assessment. Um, and also too, um, with that is also, uh, the McQuan, with Gina and the, the, uh, the name of the committee. So McQuan is finally moving forward, uh, the, we had the bidding May 4th, we had a challenge, we had a protest, we overcame both of them, um, we're now working on the agreement with the lowest bidder, um, SMI who said-
The lowest, the first lowest bidder or?
The lowest el, responsible eligible bidder.
Okay, all right.
Yes, yes, so we had two bids that were rejected.
Right.
One of them includes the protest, so basically this bidder here is the lowest responsible eligible.
Is it still below a million?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, 936666.
Okay.
So responsible and eligible means they've, they've, they, their bid package was complete, um, the reference checks have checked out, and so we're moving forward now. Town Council has the agreement that we're reviewing and we will begin entering into the, the agreement, so, um, still really focusing and hopefully this will start in the fall to have that building come down. Um, and also regarding that, um, Charlie Baker has been conducting an inventory of the contents of the building. Um, he is going through and making an inventory of everything, including everything that's in there. And what we'll do is at a next few meeting, um, meeting, I will provide the board with a complete inventory, um, it will have pictures and then what we can do is, um, the, the board will look at this, hopefully declare surplus, and then we can begin auctioning these items off. That will bring in a lot of great revenue for the town.
You gave us the ballpark, you knew we were going to ask this, so.
Um, so, I mean, as far as money, no, but we've got approximately, um, I would say, let's see, probably 150 items that are in that school right now, um.
Does Charlie feel like they're like items people would want, be interested in?
Absolutely, there's, there's pianos.
I'm not trying to make this an attr, more of an attractive nuisance than it already is, but-
There's a scoreboard in there, um, the kitchen equipment, kitchen equipment will, will bring a lot of, um, attention, so we are working on that as well. Um, so that, that is heading in a very, very good direction.
That's awesome.
So we also had kickoff meeting with Human Resources Inc., who is going to be doing a review of all of our personnel policies in manual. Um, they're going to be doing a orientation with our department heads at our, the June meeting, department head meeting, they'll do an orientation and talking about them. Um, right now, most of our personnel policies, which we have about 20 of them, are in paper form, so they're going to need to be scanned in and our senior volunteer, when she comes in, will help us with that process.
What's the QC process to make sure that everything that's scanned, that we want scanned in is scanned in in its entirety?
If it's in the policy binder that we have, that policy will all be scanned in.
No, but how do you know that somebody's not skipping a page or that pages didn't get stuck together? Okay, all right.
Yeah, so Lynn will, Lynn will watch over as that's scanned in.
Okay.
Um, and then we do have some policies that are in electronic format, so these are all going to be sent to HRS for them to begin that process. Um, and they basically, when they're finished and we have a, a complete policy manual, that we will be very happy with it. It will be up to date, it will be in, um, in line with all of our, all of the new labor laws and, and employment laws, so we'll be in very good shape.
And once we get that, Ms. Green, um, how, what is our intention in terms of our employees? Are we going to, um, provide them all with a copy and have them acknowledge receipt of the?
So yes, what our plan is to have something printed up just like this, that will have our table contents, but in the very front, it will have an acknowledgement page that they'll sign and they'll, they'll give to us and we'll keep in the personnel files.
Okay.
So that's the plan.
And to the extent somebody might decline to acknowledge receipt of that, um, I just ask you to think about what our plan, action plan would be for that.
Yeah, that's a good question. And I, I'll ask town council to look into that, if somebody were to decline, um, not acknowledging receipt of the personnel policies. Um, also too, um, myself and, and town council had a, a meeting with the Administrative Assistance Union. They have a new rep, union representative, so it was kind of a meet and greet type of meeting. Um, they were able to bring up some, um, concerns that they had, um, and we were able to talk through them. So, um, going forward, the union and the, and the union representative would like to have a monthly meeting just so that they can bring up any concerns, uh, that maybe we can address right away, but I think that's a very good approach to, uh, to, to strengthening and bringing our working relationship in a positive direction.
That sounds great. I mean, I think the board really, um, and I know you do, acknowledge that we need to make some headway there.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
In improvement, so, um-
So this is a very good start, very good start. Um, also to do today, um, town planner, Tony Dupre, Sema, and myself participated in the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners Grant Round Workshop. Um, it's a requirement for the grant that the library will be, uh, applying for. Um, the webinar was about two hours and they went through a lot of really, um, great information of the application process. They went through the timeline, the deadlines, um, they went through a lot of the criteria that they're going to look at, how the, the applications will be evaluated, um, so it was a very good meeting, um, we learned an awful lot and I believe our library director will be, they have three different dates for this, so, um, town planner, Dupre, Sema and myself sat through it today. Um, I believe our library director will be sitting in one of the other meet, two meetings coming up. Um, they will, they will provide a recorded, um, meeting that we can just go through because there's a lot of information and, and PowerPoints on that, but very good information, um, we stand ready to assist the library in every, any way we can with the grants. Um, and we haven't, luckily, we have until, um, the application itself is due in May of 2024, so it gives us a little good timeline and we have basically, 2025 is, is going to complete the grant, um, process and I believe that's when they will make the decisions on the grant. So we've got a long time to plan so that we can make sure that we take our time and do it right the first time and not miss anything.
So when would it need to be on a town meeting warrant? Because what I can see this like it's a, like an oncoming train here, um, we've got the highway folks, we know we have to do something about that situation.
Yes, yes.
We know this.
Yes.
Um, and it's been talked about and that can's been kicked down the road for a variety of reasons. Um, and then we've got the library and I, I just want to make sure that, you know, that we're, we're being smart and thoughtful about the needs and the prior, the, the order of the needs and, um, and all of that. And that isn't to say one is more important than the other, but it's a balancing act as per usual.
So my, my best, my best thought as far as town meeting would be May of 2025.
Okay.
Um, because I don't have the exact date of when they would actually, um, you know, when, when they'll announce the grant awards, so, um, that, that's my, that's my best thought of when it would need to be put forth to a town meeting. Um, it was May of '25.
And so I think it's going to be important for us to that, get that schedule of retiring debts, um, updated from, uh, the treasure collector, I mean, um, Eric may be able to help us with that.
Yes, yes.
Um, so that we can say, okay, police stations coming off the books for debts, that gives us wiggle room to put this on there, you know, that type of thing.
Yes, absolutely.
To the extent that's possible.
Yeah, I mean, we, we, there's, there's definitely a lot in the pipeline that's coming down, um, the lane, definitely a lot of movement, um, with the town. And Highway has, um, they've brought on, um, Weston and Smith to con, to conduct the feasibility study for their current location, so I've signed that agreement, so that, that process is all, is begun, which is great. So we'll have a lot of these things that are going to come together almost in bulk.
Yep.
You know, it, almost at once, so hopefully all of this can be put forth in May of 2025 meeting, that, that's, would, that would be my goal for, for this. Town Council, oh, I already, I already said that. So Town Hall is getting some, two new copiers, so we have two dinosaurs in the building that continually break down, they jam, we, I feel like we have Bay Copy out here every other day. Um, our IT Director, Steve Mulberg, worked with Bay Copy, uh, we're getting two new copiers, they will have color capabilities, and what that means is it will save us money instead of having a color printer in every department, it will save money on, on those color printers in every department. Um, they, each of these copiers will come with PIN numbers, so if anybody needs to print out something that's confidential or they have to have something in color, they, they print it, they go out to the copier, they'll put in their PIN number and the copier will in their PIN number and the copier will spit out their copies at that time. So, they won't have to worry about confidential information sitting. However, they will still have their black and white printers in the offices so they can print out any type of confidential information.
Now, do you know if the situation with the Board of Health offices, I know they needed a multi-functional black and white printer?
That, yes, that, that is in the works. The IT Director, Steve Mulberg, is working on getting a quote for that multi-function black and white printer for the health, for the Board of Health Office. So, that, that is moving forward. So, I don't have the exact date of when we will receive the copiers, but I'm welcoming them because we are constantly going through the one on the first floor, trying to find where the jams are. It's continual. So, this is good. And it's going to save us approximately $100 a month between the two lease for the two copiers. So, that's a good savings. Ink is also included, both black, the black toner and the color cartridges. As of right now, for instance, the color printer that's in our office, the color cartridges can, can cost over $1,000. They last for almost a year, but still we're, this is, this ink is included with the new copiers. So, it's going to be a savings overall for that. So, we're looking forward to that. Also too, it was brought to my attention not too long ago that possibly four or five years ago, a prior town administrator entered into an agreement with a solar company, it looks like for net metering agreements. And this hasn't been revisited since. So, it was brought to my attention to maybe look at this and revisit and see if this is still saving the town some money on our energy and national grid bills. So, I have met with the company. We're gathering the national grid bills and I'm going to forward the bills to the company. Also, I'm going to forward them to Sprague Energy, who's our consultant, and have him take a look at these and see if indeed this is actually saving us money or if it's kind of gone stagnant and we need to move on and, and find another company or renegotiate terms on this. Again, because it was done four or five years ago, I don't even have an, an agreement yet. So, the company is going to get me the agreement that at least I can look at, see what the terms are and what the length of the agreement is. So, that's also in the works. And last but not least, this actually can go up with the, with the school. I spoke with Mark Abrams today and talked with him about setting up a date to have him come before the board and how, basically provide us with some education on the Chapter 70 school funding, the formulas, where the numbers come from, the net school spending, how that comes about, and the minimum contributions for the communities, how that comes about.
So, you said end of June?
Well, I'm hoping possibly either June 27th or the first meeting in July. He is going to provide me with a proposal that I'm waiting on and then we will firm up the date.
And Ms. Green, I would hope we would extend an invite to our Finance Committee.
Oh, absolutely.
Even capital improvement, although it's not directly, but you know, they are part of our finance team.
Absolutely.
And then our Hanson School Committee members.
Yes.
Because it, it occurred to me this weekend that with the turnover of the folks on our school committee, I don't think this board has that same relationship with prior school committee members that we've had in the past, you know, when Mike Jones and those guys were on the Robbie. And, you know, they were people that we knew, we dealt with all the time. And we've had a lot of turnover there and there's been turnover here. So, I'd like to really reestablish those relationships between the school committee and the Select Board in Hanson. So, I would very much like it if you could extend an invite to the school committee members from Hanson for that.
I'd be happy to. I'll just, I just need to get the date scheduled and then I'll extend the invitations. But actually too, this, this will fall in line very nicely with the Madden Report. So, so we'll, we'll have a lot of education on our side when, when the discussions start happening with the assessment. We will go in with an education and an idea of our numbers. So, I think that these two, these two gentlemen will really give us the tools that we need to go in here and be well educated.
And can you just make sure that our Town Accountant is also going to be available for that night? I just want to make sure in case we've got any Johnny-on-the-Spot type of questions that he'll be there.
I can absolutely extend an invitation to her as well. And actually, that concludes my town administrator report for this week.
All right. Did anybody have any questions for Ms. Green? Okay, awesome. Then, this is just practically like a phenomenal, amazing type of thing. And don't get used to this, Mr. George, because it doesn't happen often. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, great. Thanks. That is amazing.